I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's council meeting, the first in the month of December. Tonight we'll open with a prayer by Councilman Gaines, followed by the pledge of allegiance by John Major, our cameraman. Mr. Gaines.
Y'all staying in prayer? Gracious Father, give us all good graces. We come to you, oh Lord. Thank you for your many, many blessings. We thank you for this opportunity to serve in the Mississippi Gulf Coast. We thank you for blessing Biloxi. We thank you for our mayor and our council. We ask all in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right. Play ball.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gaines. Without any discussion, all in favor of suspending the rules? Seven oh vote for the clerk, please. The clerk would read the changes.
To the consent agenda, we're adding five in resolution authorizing special event sponsorship agreement with Fresh Junkie Productions for the Mississippi Gulf Coast Marathon.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Gaines to approve the amended agenda. Any discussion there being none, all in favor of approving the amended agenda. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. That leads us to the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Welcome everyone as well. Has begun. I think I trust everyone has had a pretty good Thanksgiving, and I know I did. I think the city did, and all its visitors did. But coming up in December, we got a lot of events, but let me give you a few updates. Sangar's moving right along, closely monitored by the archives and history on the plaster work, and I think in a number of weeks, we'll be finished with that and get down to the detail of putting the nuts and bolts together and some of the things that would move it forward. But I think that work on the stage and the ornate columns and area in the front will be moving right along. And again, with the grants and some of the other things we're pursuing, that will give us a, you know, a complete working Sangar Theater after a number of years. Pop's Ferry Extension, I guess Clearing Grove, it's been started, they actually broke ground. And I think there's a part of that on the agenda tonight about the right-of-way CSXes. We have to get to them in order to move forward with hard construction. As I mentioned, it's December. We've got many events coming up. Lighting of the lighthouse is Thursday, I think, and Christmas on the Water Children's Parade Friday, lighting of the town green Friday and Saturday, 20th Annual Christmas in the city downtown, and open house at the visitor center, Christmas on the water parade, boat parade that night. But all those are listed in, will be listed in B News as well as on the website. So December should be very exciting for Biloxi. And tell all your friends and participate in some of the things that are going on this next few weeks. I think we got the Woolmarket Christmas Parade in a week or so, 14th, I believe, right? So there'll be plenty of throws and all of these events coming up. And the last part of my reporting business would be to ask to spread to the council members the expenses of the Biloxi travel credit card. And I believe that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving to departmental reports, Chief Geiser wanted to have a word. Chief?
Yes, sir. So we have been, Biloxi has been selected by the American Red Cross to participate in the Sound the Alarm event. Mr. Tommy Smith, I'm gonna call him up. He's with the American Red Cross. He is actually gonna give some details and kinda give you a rundown of what all is gonna occur.
Evening, everybody. My name's Tommy Smith. I'm a volunteer with American Red Cross. Hopefully, everybody got a very hastily prepared document from me today. I'm not gonna go word by word for that, but basically, it's called Sound the Alarm. Without going into too many details, home fire is bad, smoke detectors good. We're gonna have an event on the day of service for Dr. King Day on the 20th of January, and we'd like to get your input both from the clients getting smoke detectors and also from getting people recruited as far as volunteers go. What we do is we'll queue up at about 8:30 at the fire department, get everybody breakfast, get them checked in. By nine o'clock, they'll have been trained and given any type of documentation and/or equipment that they need when they go out. We send out teams of three. One person's the installer, which literally puts two screws into the wall. We have an educator, which gives them education on fires, home fires, fire safety, and local floods, that type of thing as far as training. And so our key metric actually isn't the smoke detectors themselves, but the amount of people that we get trained. And so we might get to a house and they have brand-new smoke detectors, but we can at least get them trained as far as any type of hazard that they've got there. And that's the key, is the resident awareness. A lot of times, we had it when I was up in Schenectady in New York, we had to reassign two different teams because individuals in white shirts and black ties, I'll let you fill in the blanks from there, were in front of us, and every time we'd knock on the door, nobody was answering doors. And so this way, you know, look, on Monday, the day of service for Dr. King, Red Cross will be out. Everyone will have T-shirts. If you have community groups, Keller Williams, Kiesler, Federal, anybody that has their own logo, if they want to wear their own hats, perfectly fine. Anybody that wants to bring family members of yours, if you want to be out in the community yourself, they just have to be 15 or older to go inside the home. Nobody knows your community better than you do. I certainly don't. I know how to get to here. I put on the GPS, I get there. And so you know the areas of concern. You can let us know about those. I've given out cards to some of y'all. I'll leave some more. So if you want to reach out to me, I'll be your key point of contact. Please don't give out my information to the constituents, because I don't know when the next blood drive is. I don't know a lot of different Red Cross stuff off the top of my head, so that will be the phone number at the bottom of the document. And they can call that to make arrangements. We will also meet with churches and community groups before the event to get them lists, so they can provide us lists of potential volunteers and also lists of people that definitely want smoke detectors. And you know what? I need to go to work. I need it by 9:30. We'll make sure that we send out a car and we get there by 9:30. Let me see what I've missed here. We will have a QR code. It hasn't been created yet. It'll be provided to everyone to where if they want to volunteer, they click that QR code. They want to get a smoke detector, they click on that different QR code. They don't have to be a resident to volunteer. The client form that we have them fill out does not ask for a name. It just asks for address, how many people we've made safer, whether someone's a minor or over 64, and whether anybody has mobility concerns. We do also bed shaker alarms for people that are hard of hearing, not just when their spouse is talking, but just in general. We offer email tracking, so the volunteers put their email into the system. They get credit for installing, so if something happens at 123 Main Street, God forbid, six years from now, they get an email saying, "You saved a life tonight." So that's really neat, and I still get the hairs on the back of my neck how many years later, after how many installs that I've done. We also identify veterans that may or may not have needs, and we can get them to their service to Armed Forces Division. Anybody have any questions? The smoke detectors are self-contained. You do not have to change the battery. It does not beep at 3:00 in the morning because the battery's going bad. It's a self-contained 10-year battery, and we indicate the date that we install it there. People can expect to work until about 2:00, depending. We used to do it in May, but people started having problems with the heat, so now we do it in January. So walking around, and again, we send out teams of three. Our partners have done it with Schenectady, I'm sorry, Biloxi Fire Department has gone out with us, House Four, House Two, and gone out, so they've been invaluable. Obviously, if they get a call for service, that's gonna take precedent over us. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you. Chief, anything else? I know smoke detectors are near and dear to your heart, so thank you for having Mr. Smith here tonight. All right. Brings us to council reports. We'll start with Mr. Lawrence in Ward One.
Papa, is this lighthouse gonna look like that? They gonna light it up like that? Red green?
Yeah, whatever colors we select, yeah. The LED lights can have some...
It'll show up pretty good, to put it's gonna look like, you know?
I don't know how...
Anyway, that's pretty good. This is all the things that's going on starting Friday, with the parade, everything downtown, the boat parade, downtown in the city Saturday. It'll be pretty busy, you know, everything. And then the same thing at the visitor center that's Saturday also. So I mean, there's a lot happening in downtown Biloxi. And I know we got these smoke detectors. I think they have a homeless detector.
We got Bob to do the homeless detector.
I think he's something...
Bob's homeless detector.
He buzzing, zipping and zipping with them, you know? Got a few phone calls today about the homeless. That seem to be the biggest problem we have, in the yards, people's yards and stuff like that, so we just gotta stay on top of that. Another thing, I brought this up last week about different things that I thought we need to look at. I know Pete is not here, but I figured Peter and Jerry needs to get together to make sure we're doing anything straight and right for the city and not abusing the city's laws and that. So when Pete comes back, we'll get with him and sit down and talk about that. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Gaines, in Ward Two.
All right. Happy December, everyone. Mayor, you had a good list there. You missed the movers and shakers. Last year, they gave away over 500 toys. It's gonna be December the 15th at the Biloxi Community Center. That's the big toy drive, so please bring out all the kids so they can come and enjoy and get a toy. I want to bring up someone who's been very instrumental in our community. She and along with her husband and Knights of Peter Claver have done an excellent job with our parks, redoing them, making sure we have a good, solid playground in the community, and it looks good. And I just gotta come up and just give a few words, Ms. Angela Griffin.
Thank you, Councilman Gaines. Good evening, everyone. I'm Angela Griffin. I'm the administrative manager with the Knights of Peter Claver Workforce Development Program located right here on Division Street in East Biloxi. Today, I'll talk to you about some exciting news. KOPC Workforce has been awarded a grant from Mississippi State University to do what we call an assessment of hazardous waste in East Biloxi. They have assigned a fellow to us. Her name is Nicole Ricketts, who's waving in the back.
Right.
So briefly, this program will basically educate individuals, community, as well as our residents in East Biloxi of how to identify hazardous waste, how to handle, there's an appropriate way of handling hazardous waste, as well as disposing of hazardous waste. So this grant starts November, started November the 1st of this year, and it will end November of 2025 of next year, of course. So we're excited to do this. We're hoping that we can broaden this to ensure that it was a collaborative effort by other organizations to partner with us, to ensure that we are doing what we need to do for the health and safety of individuals in Ward Two. So as always, thank you all for your support. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Angela. And also, just to touch on it, there's been a couple of years, they have electrician program, they have a carpentry program, and like I said, they've done a whole lot in the community, and they are gonna be starting up an HVAC program coming up soon. So thank you again, Knights of Peter Claver. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Councilwoman Newman in Ward Three.
Yes, speaking of hazardous waste, Jerry, I see we just got a response finally from the methadone clinic. So what's the next protocol?
I spent a good part of the morning yesterday speaking with someone from the management group and with the attorney for the group. They had not received the first letter that we sent out on November the 5th, but someone at the clinic had reported to the management group that they had seen something from the council meeting, you know, the conversation that we had last time. And so she called to find out, you know, what was going on and what the steps were. I emailed her a copy of the letter, and later she told me that her attorney would call me. He called me yesterday. He was very apologetic. All of the issues around here, and this letter goes into great detail, so you can read it, but everything seems to center around the dumpster in the back, the dumpster being open. So what they've done is they put a lock on that dumpster, and they put a serious lock on it, too. It's actually a bar that comes up over the lid on top of it, and they've cleaned it out. We went by there today. They've cleaned out around the outside. The bottles are gone. Everything that people were rummaging through the dumpster to get out is gone. They've hired a company called Jan Pro to come in three times a week and keep the property clean. Now, their lease does not include the wooded area in the back. We'll have to continue to deal with the property owner on that, and there is some trash back there. The homeless camp is gone, but there is still some trash piles back there, and we'll continue to work with, to get him to keep that cleaned up. But the leased area is the improved area, the part that's paved, including the building and the dumpster. The, one of the things I wanted to clarify is that there are no needles used, no syringe needles used at that clinic. They said if there were syringe needles out in the parking lot, there had to have been somebody that came there at night or whatever, but they don't use any. And the other, the other issue they wanted to emphasize is that once someone, a patient comes there for their treatment, they leave immediately. And I went by there this morning, and every parking space in the parking lot was filled with a very nice-looking car, auto, you know, so it's obviously other people that are coming there to get treatment. What they're asking for is to give them a chance to, you know, they're offered steps here to clean up their act. I have direct phone contact information with them now, so that if there's a problem, I can call them. And what they're asking for is that we would give them a chance to straighten everything up, which is typically what we do whenever we put them on notice about revoking a conditional use permit. You have X number of days to clean it up, and if you don't, then we'll take action. But they did take action today.
How long are we gonna give them, and are we still gonna do the public hearing, or is that on hold?
Well, it would be, it would be up to you, up to the city council, as to whether or not y'all want me to continue with it, or whether or not y'all wanna, you wanna read through this and see if this is acceptable, and then get back with me. You know, I mean, that's a council decision.
But they have been notified, and they understand the severity of what has been, has taken place there, and I think...
The spirit, the spirit of both the manager that I talked to and the attorney yesterday is that they were not aware that this had been going on. They had a discussion with their on-site manager there about the problems that were happening there, and that they'll take, they'll take steps to get it cleaned up, and they did that today. They actually cleaned the property. And I've got pictures here if you want to look at it, but they did...
I just want to make sure that we don't let it fall by the wayside, and we make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and don't let it go back to their old ways. I mean...
We'll, we'll keep an eye on it.
I would think that these managers would have had a better hold on it to begin with. So I just want to make sure it doesn't fall by the wayside.
We'll stay on top of it and make sure. If you want to read through that and call me tomorrow, we'll...
Oh, so my next question is, if we do find another issue, do we have to go through this whole process again, or can we immediately do the public hearing?
No, we could go ahead. I mean, if for whatever reason, they've been put on notice now. If for whatever reason that they fail to comply, we'll just go ahead and start the process. We'll notify them that we're starting the process already, so.
Perfect. Okay. Do we have any updates on the Broadwater property, what we're doing? How's the police substation going?
The only update I have is that I talked to Roy Anderson late last week, and it reminded him that he needs to keep those pathways that they've cut open and clear to allow the police to continue to move through there. As you know, we had a head count. I think you saw that we had a head count was on the news, and it indicated that the numbers had really dropped considerably in that, in that area. Now, that doesn't mean they're not, they're not gonna come back. That's what we're worried about a little bit. That's why we need the roads to be kept open to keep the police moving through there on their little ATVs and...
How often is the police going through there?
Jeep.
Sorry, chief.
No, it's a regular routine. We have those offices that are assigned to do nothing but that. So that's, that and a couple other spots. They're just rotating from one spot to another their whole shift. They're through there a bunch of times.
Have you had many arrests lately?
Not out of there. There's not that many in there. There's still a few that roam through. And again, you know, we're keeping an eye on it, hoping that we're gonna be able to keep them moving and not move back in there.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Ward Four, Mr. McGilvery.
Just a reminder, next Thursday, 12th of December, 5:30, Cunkas Country Club. I have my first ward meeting there. I hope you can attend that along with the directors.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Glavin in Ward Six.
Thank you, Mr. President. Things on or not? There we go. The focus I have is on lighting. I did ride through a neighborhood and turned in some burned-out lights, and Coast Electric responded almost immediately. However, there were some common roads like Lamy and Brody that identified some lights, and they said that if I would go and take some caution tape and tie around the poles and tell me when that was finished, then they would send somebody out. So I'm prepared to go get some caution tape, is that...
Yellow ribbon.
If that's what it takes, and, and try to get some of those lights that are burned out fixed. On this point, though, some of the lights are new LED lights, and they seem to be, I don't know if they're not activated yet, if they've been recently installed. And this is particularly along Brody and Tribe Drive. Can we investigate that before I go put some caution tape around some poles, and they may be in progress? She couldn't answer my question on that today, but maybe we can clarify, you know, who's doing that, and if that's all it is, it needs to be connected. And then, also related to lighting, a few meetings ago, I turned in a request to investigate Savannah Circle West to see if we could put a light. There's a dark cul-de-sac where there's activity at night. I'm not saying it's drug-related, or people are going down parking or whatever, but it appears that that could be an opportunity. And if we could get a light down on Savannah Circle West, there's a few more houses that are built in and around that area. There's no houses down in that cul-de-sac area yet, but it's certainly an area of concern that they noticed some activity down in that area. Perhaps, chief, if there's a patrol car in that area, maybe they can just take a little ride down, check out that cul-de-sac. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Mr. Shoemaker in Ward Seven.
Just one thing, and I know the mayor mentioned it earlier, but a reminder, next Saturday, the 14th of December, 2:00 in the afternoon, we'll have the Woolmarket Christmas Parade. If anybody cares to be a part of that and ride in the parade, they can contact me or Parks and Rec Director Bill. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Just one thing, and I've already spoken with Chief Miller about this this evening, but some of the homeless that have left the Broadwater property apparently have moved west. They're now, there are a few camps west of Eisenhower Drive, south of Pass Road, so on some private property. It's wooded, some acreage. So I'm in touch with the police department on that, but that's, I mean, they've got to go somewhere, so that's where some are going. That concludes my report. Yes, I'm sorry.
I got one more thing, too.
I'm following up on the Broadwater.
Yeah, Mr. Lawrence.
It's overgrown property. How come we can't have it cleared? You clear the property, they're gone. I don't care where it is, Anderson, WC4, we rent out people every week, overgrown property, and a lot of Broadwater is overgrown. All you do is cut it. You cut it, they're gone. That's simple. I don't mind loaning the numbers. We don't need the numbers, period. If you don't clear the property, they're not gonna go anywhere. And they're just responsible, Anderson and Ford, just like anybody else. You write them up all day long, Jerry. So you write them up, get them to clear the property. They in that business. They got more equipment than anybody. They can clear that property in two or three days. That's what needs to be done with the Broadwater.
Well, we're working. It's more, it's not as simple as it seems, but everything is, what we're doing is everything from a legal standpoint and a practical standpoint to make sure that those problems are minimized. And it's a tough, tough deal to get that 200-something acres, I believe, isn't it?
Well, I mean, with the Gulf Coast, it grew for grass. Never had a problem. You let it grow, it's grown over. You need to clear. And following up on the thing with Dixie was that methadone play. I'm like, don't tell me they didn't know that was going on. And when they sold that big deal, "Hey, we're gonna do everything right. We'll never have a problem. You'll never hear from us again." Well, that's not the case. We do have a problem. And I don't care what you take, Jerry, one week, two weeks, every week, give us a report on that. If they don't do it, shut them down. That's what the condition we use is for. We have the right to pull it, and in time, we're ready. So you check with the next, next meeting, and you tell us again what they've done or what they've not done. You haven't heard anything? We take it out of there. That's simple. That's the power we have up here. That's what we do. We set the laws. We don't break them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Gaines.
Yeah, just want to make a note that the IP Casino, the parking lot which is in Ward Two, the mayor and I are gonna meet with the, with Mr. Swartz, the CEO of the IP Casino, and discuss the timeframe of when we're gonna have that dusty area kind of fixed up. So, yeah, so we got a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, and we'll bring an update to the council once that is officially put together.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gaines. That brings us to citizens' comments. We'll set aside up to 45 minutes any individual who wishes to speak. When you're recognized, you can speak up to three minutes. We have a timer over here. When your three minutes are up, you will hear this sound. It's a pleasant sound. And your time, when it expires, you'll hear that sound. We'll move on to the next person who wishes to speak. That being said, is there anybody on my left, your right, that wishes to speak? Mr. Silvestre.
Hi. First of all, thanks, George, for speaking up. I appreciate everybody trying to do something about the homeless situation, but you're putting the mayor, everyone's in a tough spot, because you can't just kick people out. There's nowhere for them to go. So we're not addressing the problem. Number two, I was away on vacation in Naples, Florida. I got multiple text messages about the shooting at the Broadwater property. I don't know anything about it, but it just happened. All neighbors called 911. Don't know anything. I haven't asked anything. That was since the last time you've met. As far as the methadone clinic is concerned, there happened to be two by my brother's house in Naples. Same company. They're huge. They don't look like that. That trash and that stuff that was there was in eyesight of doctors and ministers of that building, walking into that building every day. They saw it, didn't do anything. So obviously, they either think Biloxi's an easy target, or that management needs to be fired. You can't have that. And yes, I agree what they say. The needles aren't theirs. Well, go read the signs that say out front. Basically, stop dealing drugs. I mean, it's ridiculous. You built an area there where you took the worst of the worst, and you put them in that area. You gave them food, woods to live in, drugs to have. I've watched so many people try and go through rehab and come back to that woods and get on drugs again, because people know they're right there. And as far as cleaning it up, there was an agreement made that they were gonna have trails so the police could drive through. It's nothing to do with the police chief. Mainly, they go through with ATVs. Yes, you can get through with an SUV. But the interest is that a patrolman can drive by, get in his car. Well, I went through there. Hey, you gotta have a truck. So we're trying to basically kick the can down the road. Own the land, clean the land. It's that simple. There's people I watch. Go to that methadone clinic, get their stuff, move two steps, sell it, get money, and buy drugs. Why do I gotta be the one up here? I understand I'm not a politician, but I also live in a house. I've had, had my wife go back up to South Carolina because of threats. Now, I'm seeing what's happening. We have old homeless people who are our regulars. They don't know how to play the system, so they're getting thrown out. They're freezing out there now, because the younger people know how to. And these guys are told, "I gotta get out of the woods," so they go out of the woods. And they don't go back, because that's the law. But they don't have anywhere to go. So all I'm saying is, I said I could step up and help with the problem, and I know it's a bad problem for everyone, but it's enough. It's enough. It's enough. You got to help us. Politics aside, like George said. And they cleaned up the whole east side of Iris. It's growing up again. Do something. Either that or come and buy our neighborhood up, give us all 500 grand, a house that will move past Christian. I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Anybody else on my left, your right, wish to speak? Last chance, anybody on my left, your right. There being no one, on the right side, your left, anyone wish to speak?
Jamie Tambiero. And I know they really don't teach civics anymore, but I believe most of us here were blessed enough to have the class being taught while we were in school. So I'm a little confused as to what rules are being suspended when the council suspends said rules. I went back into the meeting minutes, and on August 27th, I mean, 24th, 1987, the Biloxi City Council adopted through a resolution 340-87 that meetings of the council be governed by Robert's Rules of Order. I ask that you please enter into record the copy of the resolution 340-87 that I will provide to you and the council clerk.
Thank you, Ms. Tambiero. Anybody else on my right, your left, wish to address the council? Anybody in the back? Okay, there being no one else to address the council, we'll move on to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read item 4A, please.
Ordinance to amend Chapter 12 pertaining to Private Security Services.
All right, the motion was by Mr. Glavine, the second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Glavine.
I don't really have anything.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to add to this. If council would like to kind of give us any kind of background on this particular ordinance, it might be helpful making a decision, but I think it's cut and dry.
All right.
Nothing?
Mr. Guines, any comments or observations?
None.
Any comments or questions? From what I understand, this increases the licensing fee from $15 to $25. If you're seeking a security service license fee, and if you are seeking a security guard license, the fee increases from $15 to $25 as well. I think that's the extent of the changes. Would that be accurate?
Yes, that's correct. And that was part of when we were looking at the second ordinance on here for the city identification services, where that was increased from $15 to $20. And that was something that we were looking at at the same time that came up. It's been years, I believe, since these, since those numbers have been updated. And I know that the fingerprinting fee is probably one of the lowest in the states, in the state. Most of them are charging far more.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments? All right, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance as presented? It's approved on a 7-0 vote for the clerk. If the clerk would read item 4B, please.
Ordinance to amend Chapter 12 pertaining to City Identification Services.
The motion was made by Mr. Glavine, the second by Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Glavine.
This is another measure, pretty much cut and dry. Has to do with fingerprinting and maybe a little bit of increase in the fees for fingerprinting. Not much more after that, so I don't know what more we could add to that.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine, Mr. McGilvery. Any comment? Pretty good. Any other comments, concerns from the council? All in favor of the measures presented? It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. The clerk would read item 4C.
Resolution Appointing Edward Douglas DeLuca, Ward six, representative to the Biloxi Tree Committee.
I'll move it. A motion by Mr. Glavine, a second by Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Glavine.
Mr. DeLuca here tonight, or?
No, neither.
I will say this, he's one of the, I guess, if you can call him a candidate, that we looked at, met with the mayor. Mayor talked to him. I've talked to him at length. Seems to have a good balance. He's almost qualified to be an arborist himself, just about. And, you know, he's also been in development, so I think he's, can look at it from a lens, from both perspectives. So I think he'll be a good appointee.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Lawrence.
He'd been doing land for 30 years. It's amazing he picks somebody that good. I mean, that's what he does for a living. He fixes yards, develops the yards, does trees, does it all. Been on him for a while.
All right. Any other comments, observations from the council? All in favor of the measures presented? It's a 7-0 vote as well. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion. By Mr. Lawrence, is there a second? Second taken by Mr. Glavine. All right, Mr. Lawrence, questions about any specific items on the consent agenda?
I would think I've gone to mine with a real estate agreement. Rachel here? L.
On item L?
This one's pretty simple. We approved an agreement, a real estate agreement, to sell the property on Pin Oak. They had 30 days from the day that the agreement was signed. We've missed one another coming and going and have not been able to get the closing done. They're going to be here tomorrow to bring me the check. So we're just extending it 30 days so that...
Extended 30 days.
Accept the check and move on.
Doesn't change anything else.
Nothing else.
Okay. And the next one on M, OFO, this is about the budget. Anything to do with audit, or this is something different? This is something you do every year?
Yeah, we do every year to square up the budget.
Well, the Z numbers here balance, and while we're having so much trouble to audit, we're two years behind. If you balance the Cs all the time, then we shouldn't be having that much problem to audit.
Right, we shouldn't be. But I mean, basically, explain some of the details of the four major programs that we had to expend some more money and some time to do that. So hopefully, that won't happen again with regard to ABL and some of the things we're going to... Yeah, but this is the square up. We do this every year. We square up, square up the budget that has to be rolled.
I don't know about that. So are we any closer to getting an audit from?
I was hoping by these, we would have it in our hands, you know, this week, last week, really. I'll double check.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that's pretty important for the council to have the audit at time, timely manner, which we hadn't been, the last couple of years, we've not received. So I know we're two years behind.
We're behind. We're behind on this year. We're not behind on two years. We were late.
Well, we haven't had 22 or 23, so that's two years.
Again.
And we're in 24.
And there were actually things that popped up in 2008 and 2009 that had to be corrected through the years.
No doubt. That's been long enough to have it all corrected, though.
It is correct now, yeah.
That's what I tell you. We got to get some help from the state of Mississippi, whatever. We just need to get it done.
As I stated, we're hopeful that we'll have this 24 audit done by March of '25. That was our goal. So what we had to do, we did. And hopefully, that this will roll over, and we'll have it on our hands in the March timeframe.
Thank you, that's it.
All right, Mr. Guines, anything?
I have none.
Ms. Newman, Mr. McGilvery, Mr. Glavine.
Let's see. Just looking at the meeting schedule for 2025, is there any conflict with cruising the coast in October or the 7th with that conflict with anything? Okay, maybe it's something that we look at. We can always move it, adjust it at some point if we need to. Other than that, very short agenda today, not much.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Shoemaker, just two items. J and K are very similar. They deal with a special event sponsorship. One is for Neptune, one is for the Gulf Coast Carnival Association. So as I understand, the city's contributing $2,500 to that sponsorship, and then there are fees associated with the special event that these two carnival organizations will provide. And I'm thinking this is, probably needs to be, it wasn't included in our budget workshops, but moving forward with these special events, we need to look ahead to these particular special events where we're going to be making these contributions. That way, we can go ahead and get them budgeted. But I wanted to be sure that I understood that accurately, Mr. Mayor. That's correct, right?
I think so.
Good deal. Think?
I think.
There's a pregnant pause, I'm sorry. All right, that's good. All right, that concludes my comments. That being the case, all in favor of the consent agenda, and we'll note the exceptions following. It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Mr. Lawrence, any exceptions?
No.
Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman, Mr. McGilvery?
None.
Mr. Glavine?
No exceptions.
Shoemaker? And I have none. All right, thank you. That brings us to code enforcement.
Item A on the agenda, Anthony Cannard, 1513 Miller Street. This property is still in violation. Not sure if you can tell from the picture, but what this is, it's a stagnant swimming pool.
Okay. Is Mr. Cannard here or anyone representing Mr. Cannard to speak on this matter at 1513 Miller Street? There being none, this hearing is closed.
Item B, WC4 LLC 323 Goose Point Boulevard. This property is still in violation.
Is there, is Mr. Four present, or, excuse me, or anyone representing Mr. Four here to speak on this matter at 323 Goose Point Boulevard or in that Goose Point subdivision? There being no one, this hearing is closed.
Item C, Yenilton de Jesus Castillo Escobar, 9391 Boyett Road. This property is still in violation.
Y'all, I would ask, if possible, I know they've done a lot of work there, and they've cleaned up a lot of the property that was pretty much dilapidated. If we could maybe give them 30 days.
A second.
There's a motion for 30 days by Mr. Shoemaker, and a second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor of a 30-day extension? It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Thank you.
Item D, JL Investment Group LLC, 372 Lakeview Boulevard. This property is still in violation.
Jerry, is that, is there anybody residing? Is it an occupied structure?
Vacant, yes. It's a vacant house.
Is anyone here to speak on behalf of JL Investment Group on this matter concerning 372 Lakeview Boulevard? There being none, this hearing is closed.
Item E, Craig Smith, 149 Gil Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item F, CVP TN Investments GP, 200 Lemieux Street. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of CVP TN Investments GP concerning the matter of 200 Lemieux Street? There being none, this hearing is closed.
Item G, Biloxi Capital LLC, 415 Howard Avenue. That case has been resolved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Creel. That brings us to the routine agenda. I'll entertain a motion by Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second?
Yes.
By Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence.
Walt, show. Hey, Walt. Bring your book up here with money, I hope. Just bring a book up here.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Like we discussed last time, we discussed about having close to $790,000. That is now in step four or five with Mississippi MEMA. That's been in there six days. As of today, we should have that by the end of this week or hopefully by the next time I see you a week from now. That's followed right behind that is 400, just shy of 411,000. That's in step three of five with MEMA. That's been in there seven days. That should hit step four or five here shortly. We are currently well in advance with our funding for the FEMA infrastructure. We're at least 60 days in advance. We have our next conference call with FEMA and MEMA this Thursday, and we will discuss additional funding at that time.
Could you give me an update on Nikke's Brothers? They left City of Biloxi, so who's going to finish up their job? They're not working around here anyway, so I don't know what they're doing.
I'll update him on Howard Avenue and the discussion that we've had with James Foster, who's on Howard, I think, and correcting the things.
So my project manager, James Foster, met with James Nikke's last Wednesday before Thanksgiving. James Nikke's with Nikke's Brothers Construction Company said that they were going to close Howard Avenue[1646.38]